Don, I'm reading your letter to Mr. Chernick.
Ms., I think it's Mickey.
Huh?
That is my, my personal response.
That's good.
So you had a front row seat for that today, didn't you?
Yeah. Well, I was ready to talk about any fiscal things. I had a, I mean, I'm not sure. Theoretically, the county might even come out ahead.
Yeah. I believe, I believe that's a net result, but it might not be the direct fiscal result from budget, from the current budget.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Is the combination of departments would say more than the 1.3% of health pool money.
Right, and I'm not sure what functions would stay up there or go up there, or, you know, there's other, because they clearly do a lot of functions. You know, last night I spent some time looking at Snohomish County, and their, their 21 budget has 113 people in it, proposed, and our county health department has 290 people.
Yeah, and but most of many, if not a strong plurality of those, I would say, are not what the public would think of as health department functions. It's interesting, in King County, they have a variety of folks, including EMS and jail health delivery in the same health department.
Really?
The, the health department, as we think of it, is, is one, but one of the prongs on an organizational chart that includes those others under a greater health mantra, under down Constantine.
Snohomish County does less. They, they really do. They have less functions. Well, they have a lot of the same functions, but it doesn't look like they do as much in something like substance abuse. That's why they're, but their top group, their overhead, way lower. I mean, their, their administrative office is like three or four people and.
So we are at 7:01. I'd like to call this meeting the Lakewood City Council for Monday, December 7th. Order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. In this strange COVID environment, it's a little harder to recognize things sometimes than it would be otherwise, but I'd like to take a momentary pause here to recognize that this is the 76th, excuse me, 79th anniversary, get my numbers reversed, of Pearl Harbor. And I note that how sobering it can be even today to visit the Arizona Memorial and realize what a tragedy that is. And so I invite you to take a momentary silent pause. Thank you. And now we'll move to proclamations and presentations. The first item of business is a proclamation expressing appreciation to Congressman Denny Heck for his exemplary accomplishments and for setting a standard for which quality leadership should aspire to emulate, as well as to extend our best wishes for continued success in all of his future endeavors, including his next avenue of public service as Lieutenant Governor of the State of Washington. You know, we're, we are losing a congressman who's easy to work with, extremely responsive. We're also losing a tenant in City Hall. Congressman, I think you know that there's an eviction moratorium currently in place. He can't kick you out, and we don't want it. And we're, but most of all, we're losing a great friend to Lakewood. And I hope that we can interact regularly in your new role. Now, I'm sure you have a pile of proclamations a mile high. I'd like to say the difference about this one is we mean it, and we truly mean it. Whereas since 2013, Congressman Denny Heck dutifully served in the United States House of Representatives as Washington State's first 10th Congressional District Representative. And whereas during Congressman Denny Heck's years of dedicated service, he has always strived to advance the welfare of the residents of the 10th Congressional District first and foremost in making decisions. And whereas Congressman Heck's caring leadership and strong vision helped enhance collaboration between the federal government and the city of Lakewood. And whereas Congressman Denny Heck's service to the city of Lakewood has demonstrated the highest level of dedication and excellence. And whereas Congressman Denny Heck's years of service have been marked by exemplary leadership espoused by his commitment to improve the quality of life for the residents of Lakewood and service members and families at Joint Base Lewis McCord. And whereas Congressman Denny Heck's ongoing collaboration with the city of Lakewood and the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership ensured that vital local transportation projects, job creation, housing, and advocating for military families and veterans remained a top federal legislative priority. And whereas Congressman Denny Heck worked tirelessly to advance legislation that would improve defense communities by making critical investments to improve transportation and infrastructure systems, enhance housing opportunities, assist with emergency services, and improve military mission readiness. And whereas Congressman Denny Heck's work in the area culminated in the creation of the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, DSEP, and the authorization of $50 million in funding for this program. Now, therefore, the city of Lakewood Council and its citizens do hereby wish to express their deepest appreciation to Congressman Denny Heck for his exemplary accomplishments and for setting the standard for which quality leadership should aspire to emulate, as well as to extend our best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors. Reclaim the 7th day of December 2020, Don Anderson, Mayor. A virtual applause, please. Congressman, I, I'm going to take personal liberty of telling you one, one story on you. And it, it shows how your interest really extends to your constituents. You may or may not remember, but we, I think you'll remember the incident, but maybe how it happened. We were, you were relatively new congressman. We were both at quarters one at JBLM for a function with General Bob Brown, the commanding general. You were speaking with General Brown, and I had quite a bit of interaction with him earlier. I went to excuse myself. I received a text that the, one of the last groups of our community connector, Striker Brigade, was redeploying, and their much-delayed plane was set to land at McCord Field. You asked if you could be excused and if you could go, and I was kind of set back. And I said something really, really deep, like, Congressman, this is your district. I think they'll let you come. And we went out and stood in a drizzle and shook hands with everybody that came off that plane. It's, it was one of the best things I ever got to do is mirror Lakewood, and I was glad that you were able to share that time with us and with those soldiers. So with that said, I'll, I'll yield the floor to the first and best congressman from the 10th District, Denny Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume you can all hear me? So I want to say thank you on several levels, but first I, I can't help but add that, which I don't think I've ever revealed to you, Don. Mainly, coming off that airplane absolutely unbeknownst to me was Captain Dan Mitchell, who grew up in Olympia and went to school with my son, graduated from West Point and was coming back from theater. I had no idea he was on that plane, the Small World category. That you were there, I think, reflects on you. I was just a tag along and so grateful for the opportunity. Thank you for the thoughtfulness and kindness of your gesture tonight. I appreciate it very much. Thank you for being spectacular landlords. I have enjoyed being in Lakewood City Hall. Perhaps as a consequence of that, and the fact frankly, I'll be a little political here, you have a spectacular city manager in John Caulfield, and the opportunity to interact was, he's a world-class guy. And that's who, of course, we saw the most when we were in the office. And it's just been a privilege to be a tenant. And I have to say, I understand that my successor has re-upped. So if I've done nothing, John, nod your head if she's re-upped. Good. I thought that that was the case, and I'm delighted for that. Smart, smart move on her part, let me tell you. I have felt very close to the Lakewood City Council. I appreciate you on so many levels, especially your attention to, to the local needs. I'm not going to mention any names, but other city councils on occasion have a tendency to pretend like they're the federal Foreign Affairs Committee and pontificate on federal matters over which they have absolutely no jurisdiction. And the truth of the matter is, it drives members of Congress nuts, like, you didn't sit through those hearings. You don't have all the information we have. And by the way, I don't tell you how to run your city business. And with Lakewood, it was always about partnering to do what was best for the Lakewood community. And it was a source of enormous gratification and fulfillment on my part. I treasure it. I treasure you, and I mean that quite sincerely. And I'm touched by the thoughtfulness that you would spend some of your very valuable time at tonight's council meeting to acknowledge our partnership, because that's what it was. And yes, I, I, there's, there's something a little bittersweet about any of these kinds of expressions, because you're pretty clearly acknowledging I'm in my fourth quarter. In fact, I may be past the halfway mark of my fourth quarter, but I've still got a, I've still got a little life left in me in terms of public service, and I'm looking forward to that. And I'm hoping that we can figure out a way in which that partnership, which we've built over eight years, can continue. With that, I just want you to know how very grateful I am. Each and every one of you, thank you.
Thank you, Congressman, and remember, it's fourth quarter is when you bear down and you get things done.
Right, somebody should have told the Seahawks that yesterday. It was, it was a long weekend for Norwesters. Seahawks lost, Huskies lost, Cougars lost, and Gonzaga's season was suspended for two weeks. This is truly the winter of our discontent.
Yeah, there's not much more that can go wrong with 2020. Is there any other council member who'd like to say something? I'd, I'd hate to let the congressman go without giving you a chance to poke at him one last time. Well, they're all so satisfied with your service and are afraid of what you can do to them as Lieutenant Governor that, that they're remaining silent. But again, on behalf of council in the city, this has been a great relationship. I've, I've learned a lot about DC from you. I don't know if I wanted to learn as much as I learned. I think maybe you learned more than you wanted to know, too. So thanks again for your service, and I'm sure we'll cross paths many times in the future.
I look forward to it. Thank you all again very much.
So now we'll move to our next proclamation, which is recognizing South Sound 911 and first, their first responders for their extraordinary work during the state Route 167 Graham and Sumner grade fires. And joining this should be Ms. Deborah Grady, the Executive Director of South Sound 911. Ms. Grady, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you.
So I just note, before I read this proclamation, that it's not often that you have a major declaration of emergency in the middle of an emergency that goes on for months. So there's, there's emergency activation on top of emergency activation. And our South Sound 911 folks and first responders have done an outside outstanding job of carrying much more than their burden in such unprecedented times. So the city of Lakewood will have liked to present you with this proclamation. Whereas on September 7th, just before 5:00 PM, a series of unprecedented brush fires erupted in Pierce County. Whereas South Sound 911 began to see, receive 911 calls reporting smoke and fire along state Route 167. In a short four-hour time span, another fast-moving fire was reported in Graham. And the next morning, the Sumner grade fire broke out, threatening the communities of Bonnie Lake and Sumner. And whereas due to extreme weather conditions, all of the fires quickly escalated to large wildland fires, which were rarely experienced in western Washington. And whereas residents were evacuated, shelter sites set up, emergency operations declared, and mutual aid activated. And whereas over a three-day period, the fires contributed to the loss of seven homes, numerous other losses in Pierce County, including 19 residential fires, eight commercial fires, and 72 brush fires. And whereas the total fire activity was significant and would have been overwhelming if not for South Sound 911's first responders brought order and calm to these very chaotic days by handling a significant volume of calls, working extended shifts, deploying with the incident management team and emergency operations center, and in some cases, coming to work on their own accord to assist. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Lakewood City Council does hereby recognize and commend the South Sound 911 first responders for their extraordinary work under extreme conditions during the state Route 167 Graham and Sumner grade fires. Reclaim the 7th day of December 2020, Don Anderson, Mayor. Ms. Grady, we'd like to yield the floor to you and give you an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of South Sound 911, we'd like to thank you for the recognition. We're honored to be part of the public safety community here in Pierce County. As you noted, Mayor, the declaration of multiple emergencies has created a challenging year for 2020 and for our staff, yet they always rise to the occasion because they're so proud to be working alongside the first responders in the field. We also want to thank our partner agencies, including the city of Lakewood, for all the support we received during our, as part of the challenges, our budget preparation. One of your council members, Councilmember Branstadter, serves in the role of our Finance Committee Chair and spent a great deal of time working directly with staff to help us get through this, this very challenging time. So we appreciate the support we received from Lakewood, and thank you for taking the time to recognize our employees with the proclamation.
Thank you. And if I could impose on you, maybe you could give us a quick update on the status of your new building?
Well, that is one of my favorite things to talk about. And as you can see, the picture in the background that I have for my virtual meeting is the depiction of the building as seen from Pacific Avenue. And the, probably the most important thing to your city manager and our finance chair is that we were on budget and we are on time to move into the, into the building. The building's divided into Building A and Building B. The side which houses the communications center floor will ramp up with activity in January, which is, as you all know, not that far away. There are three Mondays left of December after this evening. And so a great deal of work and technology will be starting in January to get all the communications equipment in on the floor so that we can hopefully by March start transitioning people actually into the building to test systems while we run operations from the current locations as well as the new PSCC. When you go into the building, elevators in, windows are in, they've got final paint on the walls. It's absolutely stunning and amazing, and we certainly hope it's what our elected officials and partner agencies envision for the future of South Sound 911. Something I'd, I'd like to share with you all is that we stay active with the neighborhood that we're going to be part of very soon there. And we're participating on December 21st, which is the darkest, shortest day of the year and the glow around the sound. And so we're hoping to light up the windows in that neighborhood and have the community participate with us. So if we're starting back in tours in the, after the first of the year, please reach out to, to Councilmember Branstadter if that is something anybody's interested in doing.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. And thanks again to your staff for all the great work in the emergency situations they deal with every day. So we'll now move to the Lakewood City Council virtual tree lighting and holiday message. And for this, I think we have our video projection staff of Ms. Kelly Fong.
Welcome to our virtual Christmas tree lighting here at the city of Lakewood. We're glad that you could join us. First, I'd like to have some of my contemporaries on the council introduce themselves and give you a holiday greeting. Hi, as we transition into the holiday season with this most unusual Christmas tree lighting in the city of Lakewood, Ian and I wanted to wish everyone out there a joyous and happy Christmas season and wishes for a happy and much better New Year.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Greetings, everyone. This Christmas season will be different than any other. So as we say goodbye to 2020, let's not forget those that are less fortunate than others. And please remember to protect yourself and your loved ones. Wear your mask and wash your hands often. And from our household to yours, we wish you a very merry Christmas and a happy new year. Thank you and God bless.
Hello, I am John Simpson, and I serve on the Lakewood City Council. I would like to take a few minutes of your time to wish you and yours either a happy Kwanzaa, a happy Hanukkah, or a Merry Christmas. This holiday season in particular provides us with an opportunity to safely enjoy ourselves and to step back and rededicate ourselves to what is important to us as we leave 2020 for a better 2021. And on this note, my family and I wish you all a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Linda Farmer. To say this has been a difficult year is an understatement. Time has suddenly sped up and slowed down all at the same time. I find myself switching between mourning all that's been lost and then being intensely grateful for what I do have. There's a lot I'm unsure of these days, but one thing I know for sure, we are better together. Now, I may have stolen that line from school superintendent Ron Banner, but I think it's very apt for the time that we're living in. Whether it's family, friends, coworkers, or neighbors, we're going to get through this faster and better if we stick together. So no matter what you're celebrating this holiday season or how you're celebrating it, I wish you the very best.
Hello, I'm Paul Bokey, and I have the privilege of being one of your Lakewood City Council members. Together, we face many challenges this year, and I hope you are all proud of how our community has responded. Lakewood is a wonderful place, and together, we have done great things. As we reflect on the past year and look forward to the holiday season, my hope is that we can all find something to be thankful for. And when we finally gather together again, we can celebrate our achievements, ready to take on the challenges and opportunities of the new year. Stay healthy, happy holidays, and Merry Christmas.
Good evening, Lakewood. Jason Whalen, Deputy Mayor for the city of Lakewood, here wishing you a merry and happy and healthy holiday season. These are challenging times, as we all know. Our families are more distant than they were in past years. And Lakewood's operation is a little bit more distant to its residents than we have been in past years. But the season will go on. We are going to have our tree lighting virtual, and we will have our holiday parade in a static fashion, and you'll hear more about that in the days to come. But for today, we all want to wish you a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season with you and your family during these challenging COVID times. It's important that we all remember to stay safe by masking up, practicing our social distancing, and certainly washing our hands before we have that holiday dinner with our close-knit family. So from my family to yours, we wish you a very merry, happy holiday season, and we look forward to a blessed 2021.
On behalf of the city of Lakewood, I'd like to wish you and yours Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. We hope that you have a great holiday season and can enjoy family, friends, and fellowship to the extent it's available in this unusual environment. You know, the Grinch has had a really, really good year in 2020. And so we're going to have him help us out by lighting our Christmas tree. Now, Grinch, are you ready?
Ready, Mayor Anderson. Max, get the sled ready.
Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Not only green when summer's here, but also when it's cold and drear. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, what pleasure can you bring me? Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, what pleasure can you bring me? How often has that Christmas tree afforded me the greatest glee? Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, what pleasure can you bring me? Oh, Christmas tree. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Not only green when summer's here, but also when it's cold and drear. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging.
We'd like to thank Shannon Kelly Fong and staff for putting that together. You did a great job. This is the year of adaptation and that was an excellent example. We're now moving to a, the youth council report and like to call on the youth council members who are standing in the wings virtually to come forward and give us their report.
Okay, well, good evening. My name is Hank and I'm here to give the youth council report as well as the school reports on behalf of Carly from Lakes and Anderson from Charles Wright. So at our last youth council meeting, we went over our plans for the city's upcoming socially distant holiday parade, where 15 of our youth council members have signed up to volunteer. We also reflected on our joint meeting with the city council and we'd like to thank you all again for the opportunity to have that meeting. Over the last month at Lakes High School, the ASB has been connecting with students weekly through video announcements made by other students. This is keeping the student body informed on clubs and sports as well as providing a way of socializing with peers and teachers. The ASB has also been working on putting together a pre-recorded winter assembly to be shown to the student body on December 16th. This will include more updates on clubs and sports, recording from the dance team, choir performance, and more opportunity for student interaction. And finally, at Charles Wright, the high school has since Thanksgiving break transitioned into online learning. There will also be COVID-19 testing on their campus this weekend. We'll continue to update you in the coming months how Charles Wright has been adapting to the challenges presented by COVID-19. Thank you. And our next score report will be from Brandon representing Harrison Prep.
Hi, my name's Brandon and I'll be giving the school report for Harrison Prep. At Harrison Prep, the first trimester of the school year is finally over and students are getting ready for winter break. Drama Club has finished casting for its upcoming play, The Fairy Tale Trials, and the HB Knowledge Bowl team just won their first meet against Bellarmine Prep. Our IB projects are progressing as our deadlines near and everyone's working hard to finish up. Thank you for your time, council.
Okay, next we have Denisea Shipp's from Summit Olympus.
Hi, I'm Denisea Shipp's. I'll be representing Summit Olympus. So far, Summit Olympus is about to finish their second project. The time when a rec starts will be halfway through our second project and right now we are having a dean's challenge within the grades and with each other. And so far, class of 23 is winning the dean's challenge. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I believe that we also had Caleb Purdy scheduled to give an update to the council for Clover Park. Is she in this meeting?
She was joining us right now.
Okay.
Okay, hi, sorry about that. So this past Friday at Clover Park, it was the end of our mid-quarter, so our students are continuing to get work turned in. Coming up, our ASB is planning our Winter Wishes, which is an event where our students can request wishes for themselves or for their friends and the goal is to grant as many wishes as possible. They're right now finalizing their plans, trying to stay within the COVID guidelines and like practice social distancing. And that's about all the events that are going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have questions for the youth council? Looking around, maybe somebody could fill us in a little bit about to what extent, if any, there are extracurricular activities of any type. Those of us who are outside the system can appreciate how online learning can work or not work over a computer, but what about the other activities that go with school? Is there any substitute or adaptation that's helping in that regard?
Sure, so as Brandon mentioned, Harrison Prep recently just had their first knowledgeable meet against Bellarmine Prep, which we won, which is good. But usually we do those meets in person and so doing that over Microsoft Teams was definitely a challenge. It was new, but I think that just comes with the territory this year and how we've had to change, change how we do things while still carrying on with our normal activities.
At Harrison Prep also for choir, we've like had to record videos instead and we've been compressing them into an audio file with everyone's voices and trying to like give that sense of the one unified voice still, even though we're not in person.
Sounds like quite a technical challenge. Well, thank you, folks, and we appreciate your involvement and your continued interest in these times and hope that you can get back to regulars before the school year is out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, maybe we'll hear a bit more on that because our next presentation is Clover Park School District Report. For that, the slated presenter is Board Member Paul Wagaman.
I think I'm in now.
Yes.
Good evening and Merry Christmas. I appreciated the, getting the chance to see the Christmas tree lighting and hearing all of your messages and Linda Farmer, you know, quoted our superintendent, "We're better together" and that's truly a true statement. You know, our nation has been pretty divided, but the bottom line is we're all neighbors and we may not agree politically on every issue, but we are neighbors and that's a very important thing. So Linda, I appreciate your quoting our superintendent. You know, the report tonight is basically, the lead item is that we're going to go to hybrid learning January 4th and then about three bullets down, it says, "Current timeline is tentative and will be revisited on December 15th." So as a bottom line is, we don't know what tomorrow brings and I wish we could be more definitive on that. We're, we as a school board are at the mercy of the Pierce County Health Department, whatever their guidelines are, is what we have to stay within. And so that's where we are today and so we'll continue to review that. Again, student safety, staff safety is on the top of our list and so if you have at the city level, have any good ideas for us, let us know. We're, we're learning to use technology. We just recently completed the Washington State School Board Directors Association annual event and it went off very, very well. We had a great presentation by Clover Park School District on the diversity issues. So those are available. If you're interested in seeing that, let us know and you can get a chance to see our superintendent and our board president along with our, one of our staff members gave a great presentation and it was well received by across the state. Elementary Wednesday schedule adjustment begins December 9th. What we're going to do there is have people do a daily check-in and do their social, emotional activities with their classroom teacher online and then begin online independent learning for the remainder of the school day. So that's something new that's coming up. A new weekly meal option available for families. Families may pick up five days' worth of meals, including breakfast and lunch, weekly for each child. Meals will be a combination of frozen, refrigerated, and packaged items with instructions for preparation. Meals are available for pickup from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Clover Park High School on Tuesdays and Lakes High School on Wednesdays. To participate, households must fill out the weekly meal pickup form each week, no later than the Friday evening prior to the date of pickup, no exceptions. Confirm that duplicate meals will not be obtained from any other school district distribution site for the following five days. Then we're, we want to, as a board, glowed a little bit maybe. We were selected as a Board of Distinction this year again. So the board was recognized by the Washington State School Board Directors Association based on how the board's governing practices, actions, and decisions impact the success of students. Those recognized as Boards of Distinction have reviewed their, their decision-making and shown how it's tied to positive student outcomes. Then Thomas Middle School student featured on the US versus Hate website. Thomas Middle School's 7th grader Noel Mezza was featured in a video he created on the front page of the US versus Hate website. In the video, Noel talked about equal rights, tolerance, and overcoming oppression. Last fall, Noel and his classmates participated in the US versus Hate National Art Contest. The competition invites students to create public anti-hate messages for their school communities. Noel created a sticker illustrating the country's climb toward equal rights. And then something that, you know, as we talked about working together, we're planning as a district to be part of the city's reverse parade of lights on Saturday, December 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And so look for our, our school bus decked out in the winter Candyland theme and festive volunteers in compliance with small group restrictions. So that concludes the school district's report for this evening. So thank you very much and again Merry Christmas.
So any council member have a question for Mr. Wagaman? Well, seeing none, I would like to thank you for coming tonight and let you know that the city council recognizes the great challenges that the school district faces and hopes to be a good partner to the extent that we can assist in the school district's efforts as it moves forward.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate that and thank you. We, you know, again, we've got computers to all our children. We still have some issues there. I think one of the things that I think, we need to make sure that internet capability is available to all our citizens. You know, again, that's a big challenge. I mean, we have water and we have electricity, but I think internet or some kind of bandwidth is, is also becomes one of those essential things if we're going to continue this program. So whatever the city can do to help us on that, that would, that would be great. We're also pushing that at the federal level too, to see what we can do there.
Thanks again. Appreciate having you tonight.
Yeah, good evening.
So now we move to the public comments section of our agenda. That's where the public may comment on any item of pertinence to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual comment. Send comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest, Lakewood, Washington, 98499, or bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments by email or by mail prior to the meeting?
Mayor Anderson, we have received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Well, if you wish to comment, you're still in luck because virtual comments will be accepted. If you would like to provide public comment, you will need to join this Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling, by telephone, dialing 1-253-215-8782, the number on the screen, and entering the Zoom participant ID code of 868-72632373, or visiting zoom.us and entering that participant code of 868-72632373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier and use the raised hand feature to be called upon. When you are unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence, such as Mary Moss, Lakewood, Washington. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Outside of that public comment period, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting, however, you will not be called on or acknowledged and your microphone will remain muted except for that three-minute period when you are called upon to make public comment. So with that said, we'll have a pregnant pause here while we look to see if anyone wishes to join us. I see the first person who raised their hand is Julian Weaver, Wheeler, excuse me. Julian?
Hey, Mayor, please note that my public comment timer is not recognizing, so that will not be available.
Well, I can, I can do that and I'll give you a 30-second warning too, so.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there, it's, okay, I'm going to go ahead, assuming that you can hear me since you said yes. Hi there, my name's Julian Wheeler, Lakewood resident. Wanted to thank the Lakewood City Council tonight for commemorating the anniversary of the tragedy at Pearl Harbor. We are, of course, the official host community of Joint Base Lewis McCord and I could think of very few other communities in this country that continue to feel the service and sacrifice of people who go into the military and who come out as veterans, who can speak to that, to the tragedies that may unfold after they serve as active duty. And I also wanted to acknowledge the service of U.S. Representative Denny Heck on his good work of bringing transit to the families of Joint Base Lewis McCord, as I recall, in meeting at the Lakewood Library a few years ago, I think in 2012, with a veteran named Harvey Brooks, where I expressed a very real need for more transit opportunities for veterans and for actually active duty and their families on base and thereafter shuttle systems started springing up. I also wanted to ask for your prayers for my traveling mercies. I'll be going to Olympia on Monday, December 14th, to serve as your elector and I won't spoil it, so I won't tell you how I'm going to vote. You'll have to tune into TVW to find out. That's Olympia State Senate Chambers, Monday, December 14th at noon. And I just wanted to kind of close with a bit of levity. I wanted to say it's great to see the Lakewood City Council. It's good to see all of you and it's good to see, well, I noticed in the, the video for the tree lighting, Mike and his wife were the only ones to wear festive holiday gear. So, so next year, you guys can improve your game and all of you, those of you still with us as councilmembers, because I acknowledge John Simpson's departing, unless we can remander him back into Lakewood, but, but all of you can step up your game. And it was good to see the, the young people, Brendan Clark and Denisea and others, the future of this community, and school board member Paul Wegman at his fighting weight. I know I can say that because I've actually seen him in person and it's impressive how healthy he is. I, I know I can say that because I've actually seen him in person and it's impressive how healthy he is. So he's a good example for the rest of us, for Lakewood to stay healthy and inclusive and also accessible. And that's one of the things I do. Everyone here in the public is invited to attend our Pierce County Accessible Communities Advisory Committee regular session, the second Tuesday of odd numbered months. And I hope to come to this council again with more information. But thank you for your endeavors to make Lakewood accessible as well as all the other virtues we have. Thank you and have a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And you're right on time at three minutes. I wouldn't know that I did have a red tie under that.
I, I didn't know that, actually.
So, Mr. Halgan had his hand raised and he left and he's back. So Dennis Halgan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Dennis Halgan. I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, former resident of Lakewood. Tonight I'm going to have three screens up. I'm going to be watching your meeting. I'm also going to be watching the murder of Horace Lorenzo Anderson and the fire and riots and looting in Seattle at the same time. I'm also going, because there were never was a legal reason for rioting and there never was a legal reason for withholding sufficient manpower to put it down in a very immediate sense, which is exactly what Governor Kristi Noem of South Dakota did. She did her due diligence before the riots happened. She knew they were coming. She talked to all of her mayors, all of her state patrol, federal government, President of the United States. They came into town. They had a peaceful protest till it got dark. Then they started throwing rocks. She was there with the National Guard in about ten minutes. Put it all down. It's all over with. People in South Dakota feel safe and secure because she's a strong woman that can make decisions. Can't say that much for, for Governor Lindsey. You make comparisons in order to figure out competence. It was many days after the riots starting and he was making speeches. He didn't know what was going on. But he also might review, because people are leaving the Puget Sound area, seven eighty seven programs going to Carolina. Six years ago, I gave you a land plan. And I also showed you a video of Nikki Haley signing it. You might take a look at that land pine. Because they don't need to look for land in South Carolina. Almost eleven hundred acres are planned. So review that. And something to be said about Denny Heck. For almost two years, he was teasing the left wing media who doesn't do anything but start rumors and throw slander and gossip and whatnot. He was teasing him to make him think he had something in his pocket, which he never did. That was during the Mueller situation we ran for two years. And so he's, you can thank him because he was fighting for open borders by doing that. And Fentanyl and all the legal stuff that was coming across the borders. There were plenty of aerial shots showing thousands of people coming at the United States at that time. And what was he doing? Playing around with the left wing media. He didn't deserve the accolades you gave him tonight. I have to look at it from a national standpoint. And the reputation that is giving the Puget Sound area as well as the whole coast, the whole West Coast. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Need to sign in, call in, raise your hand. Do we see anyone, Ms. Schumacher?
Mayor Anderson, no one else has raised their hand to speak this evening.
And I see none, so I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A approval of the minutes of the city council study session of November ninth, two thousand and twenty. B approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. C approval of claims vouchers in the amount of three million nine hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty five cents for the period of October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty through November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. D approval of payroll checks in the amount of two million four hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars and ninety nine cents for the period of October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty through November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. E motion number two thousand and twenty dash sixty eight, authorizing the award of a construction contract to R W Scott Construction Company in the amount of seven hundred and forty four thousand, seven hundred and forty four dollars for the construction of the Hundredth Street Southwest and Lakewood Drive Southwest Traffic Signal Replacement Project. F motion number two thousand and twenty dash sixty nine, authorizing the award of a construction contract to R L Allia Company in the amount of eight hundred and ninety thousand, twenty seven dollars for the construction of the one hundred and eleven, one hundred and twelfth street improvement project. G motion number two thousand and twenty dash seventy, authorizing the award of a construction contract to R L Allia Company in the amount of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and sixty cents for the construction of the Lakewood Drive Sidewalk Project. H motion number two thousand and twenty dash seventy one, reappointing Bethany Campbell and Joan Cooley to serve on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board through December thirty one, two thousand and twenty three. I items filed in the office of the city clerk, one planning commission meeting minutes of November fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? See none, why entertain a motion?
For probably the final time, Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Move by Mr. Simpson, second, I believe, with Ms. Moss, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Will all in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. We'll have that golden brost and present it to you, Mr. Simpson.
I look forward to it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, now move to any unfinished business to come before the council. Mr. Caulfield, is there any unfinished business?
There is none, Mayor.
Under new business.
I'm sorry, point of.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, you jumped over ordinance. You have an ordinance.
Sorry, I have my.
It would make the meeting shorter.
I thought maybe you attested me.
As I, yeah, as I flip the pages, the numbers blended in with, with the motions on on the consent agenda. So we'll move to ordinances. Ordinance number seven forty seven, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven forty seven, amending title fifteen A of the Lakewood Municipal Code to reflect the adoption of the two thousand and eighteen additions of the International Code Council, a member of the International Code family and other related codes pursuant to chapter nineteen point twenty seven of the revised Code of Washington.
And for this, we have Mr. Gindy.
President, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Gindy, you have the floor. Explain this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. In front of you is the request to adopt the new twenty eighteen family of codes as amended by the state of Washington. The group of codes includes the International Building Code, Residential Code, mechanical plant code governing and property maintenance code, fire code. These are all construction codes that governs the construction activity in the city of Lakewood.
Other questions for Mr. Gindy? I don't see any hands raised. I entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
It's moved by Mr. Simpson. Second, seconded by Mr. Wayland that we adopt ordinance under seven forty seven. Discussion by council.
Pretty straightforward.
Any questions, discussion, call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gindy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Have a good evening and Merry Christmas.
And likewise, thank you. We now move to resolutions, resolution number twenty twenty dash fifteen, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty dash fifteen, setting the two thousand and twenty one docket of potential amendments to the Lakewood Comprehensive Plan, including the future land use and zoning maps and the Lakewood Land Use and Development Code.
And for this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will share my screen very briefly. So on November twenty third, the council reviewed the group of amendments that was brought before you in a couple of different ways. One was a recommendation that came from the Planning Commission and included seven amendments. There was an additional amendment brought forward during public comment. Excuse me, let me start over. Eight amendments from the Planning Commission, seven of which you had seen prior. One came out of the Planning Commission's public hearing. On November twenty third, there were three more amendments that were brought to your attention because of council member communications to staff. And then one of those was incorporated within an existing amendment because it was a similar topic. So this evening you're scheduled to take action on a resolution that would approve the docket to include eleven amendments total. And to summarize that, it's, the first is replacing the energy sustainability chapter with an energy and climate chapter, updating based on the Springbrook rezone that happened in two thousand and twenty, the adoption of the city parks legacy plan, looking at housing types and encouraging those that are either encouraged or required per state law. Updates regarding Western State Hospital and other public institutional uses. The adoption of two different sub area plans by the time this code cycle comes to you next summer. Looking at a potential new center of local importance focused on industrial development on the east side of the city. Looking in telecom at what originated as a public request for a certain number of parcels getting rezoned, but has expanded into a larger analysis of that area of the city. Looking at text amendments relating to highest and best uses for commercial lands, expanding the list of water supply related facilities included in title eighteen A forty. And then looking at transitory accommodations in response to a state bill seventeen fifty four. So tonight, as I mentioned, would be when the council would take action on the resolution and then starting in this winter and into next spring is when the planning commission would review substantively those things. And then they would come back to you as a fleshed out docket for your consideration by next May or June. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions for Ms. Spear? Seeing none, I entertain a motion on resolution number twenty twenty dash fifteen.
So move, Mayor.
So move by Mr. Brenstedt or seconded by Mr. Wayland?
Yes.
That we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash fifteen. Is there any further discussion? Scanning for hands, seeing none. Will all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. We now move to unfinished business. Please confirm that there's no unfinished business, Mr. W.
I will reconfirm there is no unfinished business, Mayor.
Thank you. Then we'll move to new business. And for this, this topic is a consideration and hopefully let's say a, a motion by one of my fellow council members to cancel the scheduled city council meetings for Monday, December twenty first and Monday, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
I so move that, Mr. Mayor. I kind of like that.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we cancel our council meetings for December twenty first and December twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wayland?
Well, I was thinking that if Mr. Simpson made the motion, perhaps he's willing to pro rata share his salary for the month of December, since he's going to force us to have a sing along. We were planning in his honor for the twenty first where he was going to do a little Christmas carol.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I had that discussion with Mr. Caulfield earlier this morning. I was in favor of having city council meetings on both those dates. However, the city manager's wisdom prevailed and hence my motion.
What about the sing along, Mr. Simpson? Are you still going to join us? Are you going to do a little caroling?
You know about that snowball that went to the other place that isn't heaven? That's the chance you got there.
Well, I don't, I don't sing or dance, so I will, I will not be present either.
Makes two of us, Mayor.
City manager knows how to tamp down as well. He.
Does it for a living.
Biz Moss is the accomplished performer, I think. Maybe we get her to leave. So with this, in all seriousness, I think we, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that Mr. Simpson had suggested that we have a special meeting on the twenty fourth at six P M. for that sing along. So we'll get out of here before he makes that motion. Well, all in favor of canceling the meetings on December twenty first and December twenty eighth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Been.
Grinch says nay.
Yeah, watching that Grinch video too much. Motion carries. We now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into my report, I'd like to turn the floor over to our city attorney to provide the mayor and the council an overview on a recommended process to fill a vacancy that will come about on January first with the resignation of Councilmember John Simpson from this esteemed body. Just one quick comment. I know Heidi's going to talk about this, but there is no prescribed process outlined in state law. So what Ms. Wagner is going to be presenting to you is actually kind of, you know, what most cities do about what this body has done in the past as it relates to past practice and filling vacancies. So with that, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney for the city of Lakewood, and I want to credit Shannon Kelly Fong, who got the task of going back into our history to pull up some of what we've done in the past. My part of the work was actually pretty easy because it's, as the manager says, really left pretty open to what councils want to do. I've included in the memorandum a link to the Municipal Research Services Center article on this. And there's only so many ways that you can say it's up to the council. However, caveat I would give you about that is you lose control over the process at night. I know that this council is not going to let that much time lapse before filling the spot, but should that happen, it goes to the Pierce County Council. The other caveat is that on the day of appointment, the person who's selected must meet the same qualifications as would be required in order to file for the office. It can't be some future tense kind of thing. They have to actually be eligible at the time. You're allowed to discuss qualifications in executive session, but the vote must be public, interviews must be public. And so that's pretty much the rundown on it. As far as how it's previously been handled, we have solicited from Lakewood residents, just a simple one page letter of interest. And as you can imagine, candidates respond in all sorts of ways. When you do that kind of solicitation, you receive sometimes a one page letter that's quite eloquent and sometimes you receive many, many pages and resumes and all manner of things. And then you just decide who you want to have in for those interviews. We've provided a timeline. There's nothing mandatory about this timeline other than that it gets you within the ninety days. Now, I am not encouraging you by any stretch to add meetings, but this council does have the power to hold special meetings if that's how you choose. but this council does have the power to hold special meetings if that's how you choose to do your selection process. You can do it as part of a regular meeting. You can make a study session into a special meeting. You could hold a special meeting on a different date. We've proposed that you have adequate time to do it in your normal course without having to do any of that. And I think there's something to be said for the fact that people associate Monday nights with our council meetings. It's likely to be the time that the public would expect you to do that sort of business. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have. Or I'm sure if there's a logistics question, your city clerk's very good at making things work with the schedule. And your city manager knows how things tend to work. So any of us can answer your questions.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walker, when I look at page 119 or what the bottom of 118, when it talked about our previous process, which seemed to work pretty well, it says early that we were asked to, the applicants were asked to submit their documents to the city clerk's house by early January. What, what did that mean? What, what does early January mean? Because I'll just state it out loud. I like the process we did last time. It really seemed to, we had a number, we had a good applicant pool.
Well,
I guess I'm trying to wrap my hands around having an application period that goes across the holidays when there's not, when, you know, a lot of people have other things on their mind. And given the situation that we're in right now. So what does early January mean?
Well, Councilmember Bulkey, in this instance, it meant between the beginning of January and January 14th, which was when the city council refined the selection process. And I would actually back that up as much as half a week to a week because we typically get you your packet as it's prepared on Tuesday or Wednesday. Your concerns are well taken. Should the council wish to push it a little bit? As you can see, you've got a little bit of wiggle room, given the timelines you've got until about March. So you could push it a little bit. On the other hand, if you allowed people into that first week or two of January, starting sometime, they could go through the holidays and into the new year and submitting something.
When would you, your advice says December 2020 solicit candidates. What would the earliest date be that we would actually could solicit? Would it be later this week? You would, we would send, send that information out? And would a 30-day period, 30 days seems like plenty enough time. So if we, if we got it out, I mean, you're talking here January 11th, so sending out a notice in, on the Wednesday, the 9th or the 10th or even the 11th, would that work?
We could do that. And 30 days is a pretty standard amount of time. I would strongly encourage, if you post it that, at that point, that you indicate that you anticipate a vacancy because you do not actually have a vacancy until December 30th.
Okay.
That doesn't mean people can't tell you if you ever have a vacancy, we're interested. But you can't, you can't say that you have vacancy until December 31st.
Okay, okay, got it. Thanks.
Mr. Wayland?
Thank you. I just had a question. I see that we're only requesting or potentially requesting a one-page letter of intent and possibly a resume attached. I wonder if we want to be a little bit more specific than that. I throw it out there. I would like to see not only, you know, kind of why they're interested, but what they would hope to accomplish perhaps, you know, what are they interested in doing? And maybe request, not just suggest, but maybe request they do attach a resume. Because otherwise, a one-page piece of information is hard for us to make qualitative decisions on. So I'd like to make sure we at least get a resume or something akin to what we get for folks who apply for citizen advisory boards and commissions, at least that much detail.
I, I agree that it'd be nice to have at least a brief resume so that you can, some due diligence. Mr. Branstad?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Walker, I just had a question and you mentioned that we would be, you know, we have to do interviews in an open meeting. And does, would we be allowed to do those at a meeting that's identified as a study session? Or would it have to be one of our two regular meetings or a special meeting?
If the idea is the application of the Open Public Meetings Act, the requirement would be that you hold the meeting in public. It doesn't specify whether that's at a regular meeting or a study session. But we would provide standard notice to the public that at that meeting, there are going to be interviews. Given current conditions, that meeting would also, and we did this even before COVID, but that meeting would be livestreamed in order that the public could have access to it. They have a right to see people as they present themselves to be on the elected body.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of in agreement with Councilmember Bulkey that I certainly would like to, at least to have the period that the person could submit an application extend a couple of weeks into January so that the application period is, covers two weeks while we actually have the vacancy. And the chance that we're folks, you know, have a time to give some good thought to what do they want to do and why would they want to do this?
Yeah, I, I have no magic number in mind, but I think we have a meeting in the 18th. I would hope we would go to, at least to the 12th, accepting applications. For kind of the same reason you stated, Mr. Branstad. Although Ms. Walker, in your, I think you pretty much stated this, but just to clarify, we wouldn't have to have, legally, there's no requirement that we even have interviews.
Correct.
Or applications. We could all get together and say, we, we want to appoint former Mayor Bill Harrison.
Correct.
We do it in public. It's legal. Not very good process, but it's legal.
Correct. And, and ideally, the check and balance to that, if you're thinking, wow, that sounds pretty random. The check and balance is that ultimately whoever's selected for the position would ultimately have to be elected at the end of whatever term they're filling. So you are correct.
And that, the, the term that will be open will be until the next election is certified in November 2020.
Correct. And, and you have actually had appointments that did it both ways. You've had people appointed who then wanted to run for the position. You've had people appointed who specifically said they were not interested in running for the position. So this council's done it both ways.
I think that was our, in 2012, that's what we did.
Correct.
And it was interesting. I think we had something like 13 applicants for appointment and then only four ran for open position or something along that line. Although I think everyone here who's been elected to office would agree, it's a lot easier to be appointed than it is to run for election. A lot less painful. Any other questions? Well, thanks for the presentation. I think that's pretty clear. So I, consensus that I think we have from this is that we put a notice out in due course fairly quickly that we anticipate a vacancy and are accepting applications along with a resume and that we, then, and when we officially have a vacancy after the first year, we hold that open for a period of time before we close the, that, say, is everybody comfortable with two weeks into January?
Does that take too much time? Don't we want to get someone appointed a little quicker if we can or? I guess it wouldn't be too bad because the fourth is probably, are we, are we on a meeting, Mr. Caulfield, on the fourth? Normal?
Yes.
I wonder, Don, if we could maybe have the notice say that we would like to have the applications back by the week of the fourth before?
Well, we won't have a, the problem I see there is we don't have, it's, in addition to the holidays, is we won't have a vacancy until the first.
Right.
So technically, it's, it's only a very short period. I personally, I'd be comfortable with going to, let's see, the 18th is a Monday. We, if we could, I don't know where our agenda's like for that day, but if we could do some interviews on the 18th, if we close the applications sometime the week before.
Yeah, I think that, actually, I think the 18th, yeah, I think you got an extra day there because the 18th is Martin Luther King Day.
It will be Tuesday, the 19th.
Good catch.
So do you want to close them?
15th?
Probably the middle of the prior week, 12th or 13th.
So that would be the Wednesday, the 13th.
Yeah. It gives staff time to get them to us by Friday, right?
And get them lined up for interviews.
It gives people a full month to work on their letter of intent.
And outline expected dates that the council would want to see applicants. So that could be put somewhere either in the notice or responding, acknowledge receipt of your packet. Please reserve these dates or something like that so that if you did a quick turnaround, they could be ready.
As it may, the council has tentatively scheduled the interviews for invited candidates for that date. I wouldn't even want to promise if we have, you know, somebody who, particularly if somebody's not qualified legally. Or it's, we, we might not want to advance everybody to interviews.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Thank you for your work.
And then Mayor, there'll be, how do you want to handle questions that you and the council would like to ask of the applicants?
Well, we've got some time to think about that.
Okay.
I think rather than doing it ad hoc tonight, maybe we can think about how we want to, to approach that. And if there's any record of what we did before, it might give us some guidance.
I was going to suggest that we pull up what, what you used previously. And we can provide you that in the next week or so. And then begin working on that and maybe have something on or about January 4th.
Sounds good.
Would we contemplate doing that kind of like a one, like obviously a public meeting, but one candidate on a Zoom interview with council, do you think?
We have to Zoom.
That's how, that's how it will be, Deputy Mayor. It will be on, it will be virtual on Zoom, one at a time. And, and probably the best way to do it would be just to bring them on alphabetically.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I, since we don't know how many applicants we're going to have, I think we need to leave ourselves an option to get all the applications. And then perhaps have a session of where we do the calling it down to decide who we're going to invite for an interview rather than just giving about four days. We kind of have to get all the applications, look at it, come together as a group and agree on. And if we decide that, that, you know, if only six people apply, well, we can interview everybody. But if, if 26 people apply, then, then there's some culling down to do. And we need to give ourselves a meeting to be able to, to do that. And if that meeting to discuss candidates and decide who gets an interview, does that have to be an open meeting or couldn't it be an executive session?
I know that it can't be an executive session. So you can't make any decisions in executive session.
Well, well, you can't make a decision in executive session, but in executive session, you can meet to discuss the qualifications of the candidate. So you could, you could do that.
So
And then have a solution with a docket of, of, that, that sets the, the docket of folks to be interviewed in an open session. I think we need to leave ourselves some time to, to do that rather than thinking we can compress it of getting the interviews and then the applications and be doing interviews in four days. I don't think that's, you know, I think there's, that's not doable if there are a sizable number of applicants.
I think we may be able, you know, I think we'll have some indication of that by the 7th. And certainly by the 14th as to whether we're going to have a higher number of applicants. And maybe able to just play it by ear, then we could have a, a brief special meeting virtually if we needed to, to cull them down.
Yeah, I, I do think that we also need to make sure that we make that decision so that we can make a notice to the applicants that are going to be interviewed with, with, with more than just a couple of days' notice that, that, that they're on the interview list.
I think we ask them to reserve it. That's now that, now they don't have to be in town. Shit. If some, if somebody can't show up virtually with a month's notice of a particular meeting, they probably don't want to be appointed that badly.
And it's better than going through the entire election, so.
I've already had a couple of people come in, tell me, contact me, tell me that they're interested. So we'll, we'll probably receive an adequate number of applicants. But receive too many is a different question.
I know we can't put this in our announcement, but in the spirit of diversity, equity and inclusion and gender parity, I would encourage women and persons of color to apply for this opening.
Any other questions, comments? I think the hands up have already spoken. If you would just speak again, let me know. All right. And is there anything further, Mr. Caulfield?
I'm just a few, a few other updates if I could, Mayor. I'd like to report some very good news. So the National Defense Authorization Act came out of, a proposal has been brought forward for the full Congress to consider out of the, the joint committee reconciling each respective bill coming out of the House and the Senate. And I'm pleased to report that the language that the city of Lakewood wrote and proposed as it relates to the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, made it through the whole process and has again, support in the House and in the Senate. And also on the political front, has strong bipartisan support. Those amendments are twofold. One is to put the eye back in infrastructure and make infrastructure projects a, a high priority for the use of these monies. And then secondly, reducing the match from 50% to, to 30%, which is actually what Mr. Heck had originally proposed and somewhere along the line that originally got, got changed. And want to thank, of course, our Congressman Denny Heck, but as well as other representatives, actually, the whole Washington State delegation. But of course, Representative Adam Smith, who is Chair of the House Armed Services Committee in, in helping out with this, as well as Congressman Derek, Derek Kilmer, who sat on a couple of subcommittees in the right place at the right time to help facilitate this. Also, on the appropriation side, the House has again, proposed $50 million in support of this program. However, the Senate has proposed 100 million, doubling it. And so we should know later this week or early next week what the actual appropriation is, is expected to be. But really, the big hurdle, the big issue was getting the authorization update in our language in there. Once Congress votes on the NDAA, and I do want to say this is the one bill that for a number of decades has always been put in place because it relates to national security in the month of December, if not sooner, will then go to the president for his signature. We are hearing that the president potentially could veto the NDAA. However, it has nothing to do with the NDAA. It has to do with some issues regarding internet activity and internet companies as well as with, um, some issues regarding internet activity and internet companies, as well as, um, changing, um, military installation names, um, from former Confederate soldiers. So, uh, that's where we are, but, um, here's the deal. Um, even if the President does veto it, um, it will come back to the new administration in February, um, for the new President's, um, consideration and signature. So, um, that's, that's where we are. So huge win for Lakewood, huge win for, uh, military communities that have installations next door to them. And, uh, so just want to, again, uh, pass along that, that, that very good and positive news to you.
Hey, John, just, just a note on that. I, I was, I think I told you, I was, uh, contacted today for available times for a committee meeting for the, uh, Federal Outreach, uh, Committee of the Association of Defense Communities, which the proposal is to meet later this week to formally endorse, uh, a legislative agenda, uh, with respect to these ever-changing amendments. And so I intend to, uh, appear just as a protective measure.
Good, good. And, um, and we're already going to be, um, well, the Public Works Engineering Department will know this tomorrow morning because this is fresh off the press. But of course, we'll now be gearing up for, um, another grant application, um, in two thousand twenty-one to complete the whole JBLM North Access Project. Um, on the CARES Act monies, the Coronavirus Relief Funds, the two point six eight five million dollars that the city has received, I am pleased to report that all of it has been appropriated. Um, kudos to our, um, lead staff on this, our, one of our planning managers, Tiffany Spear, our Economic Development Manager, Becky Newton, um, and our Human Services Coordinator, Brian Murphy, as well as our Housing Manager, Jeff Gumm, have all been absolutely instrumental in making these monies available to our community. Um, in the end, uh, thirty-nine percent of the funds are a little, almost one point one million went to business and commercial landlord assistance. About a third went to, uh, human services to include rental assistance and childcare assistance. Another nine percent went to our public agencies, uh, partners such as the West Pierce Fire and Rescue, Lakewood Water District, and a number of other agencies, the library, for example. Um, and then the remaining twenty percent went to the city of Lakewood, including an additional one hundred and six thousand dollars that was essentially what was left and not allocated on November thirtieth. So again, we were able to get that money out there and allocated. And so now we're, um, doing the final paperwork to get everything closed out by twelve thirty-one in partnership with Washington State Department of Commerce. However, we're still not done. We have some CDBG COVID nineteen monies that we're still, um, releasing and making available. I know I just signed a couple of, uh, additional contracts for some businesses earlier this afternoon. Um, we also have a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in tenant-based rental assistance monies through the CDBG fund that we have to have expended by, um, December thirty-first. HUD made some last-minute changes to help us in facilitating the distribution of those monies. And again, that's for rental assistance, um, here in Lakewood, and so we're in the process of launching that. Uh, we have also been proactive in communicating particularly to our business community and our small businesses. The fifty million dollars that, uh, Governor Inslee announced making available, um, for small businesses within the last, within the last week, week, week or so. Mary Dodsworth, our Park and Rec Director, um, she is, um, you know, we've seen an upbeat in, um, in tagging around the city, and actually, it's related again to just quite frankly, two or three, four individuals. Um, you know, our crews come by, they clean it off, and then the next day, uh, the nonsense comes back again. And, uh, so one of the things that Ms. Dodsworth and her team are looking at is to put together a graffiti removal program comprised of, you know, volunteers in the community, if they want to come out and provide some sweat equity and helping with that. So look for that sometime in two thousand twenty-one. Um, it's a program, um, that we're gonna try and get up and running, and, uh, we'll certainly keep you apprised of that. Real quick on the Nisqually Jail contract, want to let you know that our Police Chief Mike Zarro and his command team had a good discussion with the Nisquallys last week, um, regarding why they decided to not continue with the contract. Um, at the end of the day, there could be a continued opportunity to have a contract with them, particularly as it relates to, um, the adjud, the post, post adjudication of a trial, um, and the sentencing. And so, um, Chief Zarro and his team are going to be meeting, um, with, with the tribe again, um, later, later this week. And so again, we'll keep you posted. Uh, likewise, Chief Zarro is having, um, continued discussions with the Pierce County Sheriff's Office, which operates the Pierce County Jail, about, um, you know, taking on more bookings, but more importantly, the one issue that we have is video arraignment. And, um, having that made available, uh, to, to Lakewood through our municipal court. So again, um, as those discussions progress and we come to some kind of resolution one way or the other, we will certainly, um, keep you, keep you apprised of that. Let's see, Economic Development. Just want to let you know that, um, actually, two thousand twenty in terms of valuation, um, could actually be the most, um, successful year ever since incorporation. Through, I think, October, November, I can't remember which month offhand, we were at a hundred and forty-three million dollars in new construction. Last year, we were at eighty-eight million. The year before, which we thought was our best year, was a hundred and twenty-five million. To put that in perspective, over the course of cityhood, uh, we have averaged between twenty-five, thirty-five million dollars in new construction on an annual basis. So this year, we're at a hundred and forty-three million. And, um, it's somewhat diverse as well. It's not like it's one industry that's driving everything. It's hospitality, it's entertainment, still a little bit of retail, primarily in the area of restaurants. Lot of industrial, uh, mixed uses beginning to pick up, and of course, housing, even though our community is built out. And I, I will be frank with you, I attribute that to the public policies that this body has put in place, um, to be able to attract business coming into here in Lakewood. So, um, I just wanted to, again, uh, pass that on to you as we close, close, close out the year. Uh, also want to recognize, um, our Human Resources Department and all of our city employees for, once again, um, getting the criteria to be named a well-city through Association of Washington Cities. And, uh, one of the key attributes of that is the staff, you know, you, you have to participate in terms of showing that we're being healthy and exercising and eating right and all of that. And, uh, once again, um, we were able to achieve that. And one of the benefits of that is that we get a two percent reduction in our, um, medical care benefits through AWC. So, um, it's an incentive-based program. Um, in particular, I do want to call out and, um, recognize our Human Resources Technician Jesse Mumford for her leadership and, uh, not just leading this, but being very, very persistent in, uh, making sure that we met the required goals and criteria. Also, speaking of Association of Washington Cities, uh, they launched their, um, Centers for Quality Community Scholarship Programs. It's actually a relatively new program, came about about two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. And it's to provide scholarships for, uh, graduating seniors. And, uh, we will be forwarding this on to the Youth Council and once again have them facilitate that process through the community to identify a well-deserving individual here in Lakewood to be able to compete for one of the, usually it's five or six scholarships is what they award statewide on an annual basis. Do want to point out that the city of Lakewood and in, in the short tenure it's been in place, I think we've had three students be awarded a scholarship, which is a very positive reflection on our, our community, including, uh, one last year as well. But again, uh, we're going to pass that work on to your Youth Council, and again, they will, um, facilitate, facilitate that, 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 that process. Kind of no surprise, but, um, the U.S. Space Command, um, uh, they narrowed down the twenty-four, um, interested communities that they, um, um, that they had received interest from and locating their, um, headquarters, and, and Lakewood was one of them, given that we have, uh, JBLM. However, uh, we were one of eighteen where they said, thanks, but no thanks. Uh, the six locations, again, no surprise, are, um, five of them are major, uh, Air Force bases in Colorado, New Mexico, Alabama areas. And, uh, so, um, we, we put in a nice application and everything, but again, um, they have chosen to, um, go, 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 go a different route. And then lastly, uh, this Fri, this Saturday, rather, this Saturday is the Reverse Parade of Lights, and it'll be right here in the town center. And, um, I know the majority of the city council are going to be, um, not, I, I guess, participating. You'll be sitting in a chair under a, uh, under, um, a, a covered, uh, tent as, uh, people drive by, and, um, it's from six to eight P.M. And, uh, you'll want to queue up over by Barnes and Noble, um, by about five thirty or five forty-five. And, uh, you'll see, um, Mary Dodsworth and Sally Martinez and other city staff over there. And so we'll have a, a special area for, uh, the mayor and the council. And, uh, of course, we'll be practicing strict social distancing. And so again, just a friendly reminder, it's just yourselves. There's not space or room for, um, any of your family members. So, um, just want to point that out. We are, um, again, restricted in kind of the space that we have available to be able to, to be able to do that. And, um, there are a number of, uh, great entries, and, uh, if you saw the City Managers' Report this week, that Shannon Kelly Fong put out, you'll see a list of, uh, the great floats that are going to be participating, though they'll be standing still, and everybody will be driving by to watch them. And of course, the Grinch and Santa will be there as, 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 as well. And, uh, your Youth Council will be there helping out and, um, participating in a number of roles. So, um, with that, Mayor, that's, um, that's my report.
Questions for Mr. Caulfield? I don't see any. It must have been very informative.
You can be the Grinch at the, uh, at the parade?
Um, no, I, 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 I do that all year round, Deputy Mayor. I, uh, I let somebody else, uh, carry the water that, that particular day. Actually, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very festive during the holiday season. Believe it or not, I know you don't believe that, but I'm, I'm, I, I actually had to give some blood, and so they did verify that I am a human being, so I'm not from, you know, someplace else.
Polly around his neck.
No, I don't buy it. One's, no, no, Mr. City Manager.
I just, I do re-watch that with one of my grandkids, and the, the Grinch is constantly checking to see if he still has a heart. It's, it's shrinking.
Yeah.
I will be clear, though, I do view the heart as a muscle. The soul is something different.
All right, so, uh, move to, uh, council comments before executive session. Uh, Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a follow-up to the city managers' reminder to us about the Quality Community Scholarship from, uh, AWC that, uh, with the past, uh, five years, this council as individual members have, uh, worked with the Lions Club to ensure that our nominee gets a local scholarship, uh, to do that. And, uh, the Lions Club, again, this year is willing to match whatever we collect to, to create, to create that. So we should look to try to, uh, collect what we can amongst ourselves, uh, by, uh, by the tenth of January or so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a mechanism for that?
Well, you know, in past years, we just turned it in at council meetings to do that. I, I, I would say that, uh, the mechanism would be, uh, a check to the Lakewood First Lions, and if, um, you were to find a way to just get it into my box in the council office, I could, uh, I could, I could, I could, I could facilitate, uh, getting that together.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Moss? We're not picking you up very well, Mary.
You mean I'm not, my mouth is not big enough? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I was just gonna say, uh, uh, appreciate, uh, the good news shared by the city manager. Uh, we like hearing good news. And the two percent for the wellness program, uh, that's about third or fourth year in a row? Yeah, okay. Well, good job, and, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to thank Ms. Kelly Fong for her fantastic work on that video for the virtual tree lighting. This is my first time with, uh, the tree lighting, and obviously, it's a very different, uh, very different experience, but, uh, fantastic job. I know how difficult it is to, to, uh, to facilitate all of that and, and to edit it down into a product, uh, that, that looks as great as she produced. So, and anybody else who was, uh, a part of that as well. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Yeah, great news on that hundred and forty-three million in new construction. Remember, new construction increases the size of the pie. It goes beyond the one percent. So it goes into our base. It increases our base forever, and then we can build, uh, up one percent a year off that. So it's very valuable, and I think, uh, you, you know, what I've been waiting for, for a long time, that we, we have these breakthrough years. Just want to make a comment that, you know, yesterday on a, on a beautiful Sunday, the, the weather held up very well and went for a walk in Ford's Silicon Park, and wow, you know, I, I hope our other, I don't know what our other parks were like, uh, the other day, but you know, the regional asset that that is, and how many people were there with their dogs. And, uh, and, and commented, my wife commented to me how every time we go into the park, there's a photographer there, right? Taking pictures of, of this time, a family, probably a Christmas card. They were all in flannel. And, uh, it was very cute. Uh, and then other times, it's graduation pictures. So really a busy day there, and, and really nicely done, you know, nice facility. We, we walked down to the new parking lot down there at the end, and that had a ton of cars in it also. So just a really busy, great day there at the park, and i- in an affirmation of the, you know, countless, uh, number of, uh, projects that this city has taken on and been a part of to, to really make that park in, into a regional asset. So I just thought I'd mention that. You know, and, and a nice tribute to Congressman Heck. I was always impressed that he would come to a lot of different Lakewood community events, because I never had seen a, in my life, not that I would have a lot of opportunities, but even when congressional districts were smaller and I was growing up, you didn't really see your congressman at a lot of stuff, it didn't seem like. So I was always very impressed that he showed up to all these events here in Lakewood and, and, uh, you know, really, really, uh, that alone impressed me a, a lot, that he was willing to, to do that. So thanks, um, that's it for me.
Mr. Whalen?
I want to extend, uh, my appreciation to Congressman Heck for exactly that. He was present, and he certainly showed up for us in many ways, so I think the proclamation was certainly appropriate. Also, thank you to the staff about the good news on the development side. I think the signal is positive that we're going in the right direction, so that's a good thing. Uh, I am, uh, looking forward to the study session on the fourteenth, only because it's an opportunity to have a brief year in review and chance to, you know, bid farewell upon farewell to Mr. Simpson. So I hope we take some special time for that next, uh, week. I, I assume we will. And then, uh, finally, I just wanted to comment. I know we got emails today on any number of things, but I think, Mr. Caulfield, there's an email from a woman by the name, or gentleman by the name of Lee Hudson about a house issue in one of the neighborhoods that it would be worthy of some little investigation there about a lot of, uh, calls for service and interesting activity at that location that is cited in the letter. So, uh, those are exactly the situations that we need to attend to. Other than that, I will see you next week after the study session in a few minutes.
And, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Giving you the, the next to last word.
Well, that is well put, because this is the next to the last word, because I will have more words next Monday. Until then, I have no further comments, sir. Thank you.
Just like to, uh, thank you. Mentioned two things. Uh, on the constituent service front, I'd like to tell you how responsive our, our folks are. I, I had a, a test, an email from a, a city council member in another jurisdiction that their ninety-year-old mother-in-law, who'd been in her house fifty years, had an issue with the had an issue with the curb cut on Veterans Drive that they were getting ready to pour. Council staff had already been on it, but the family was concerned that it could be fixed earlier rather than later. I called Mr. Caulfield and he just had somebody call that basically confirmed that they had corrected the problem already. So the, it was actually completed as the inquiry took place. So it, it evidences how responsive our folks can be. They had looked into it, the contractors out there, they decided, figured out, were figuring out how to fix it, communicating with the family. And before the curb is poured, they fixed what could have been a problem. Took a look back and created some issues for folks. And it makes us look better than that individual's jurisdiction. So I have to give him a bad time when I see him. See if we could get that done in his city. Also, I would encourage all of you, through some of that, that construction being brought to our attention, to go out and drive around Woodbrook. If you haven't been there in the last even month, it is a beehive of activity with commercial development popping up everywhere. If you had driven out there even two years ago and seen a couple of new buildings and said, wow, this is really progress, you would be, and not seen it since, you'd be truly amazed. The Woodbrook Middle School is not there anymore. They're pouring. There are buildings farther down that are already up. There are more that are under construction. There's grading going on. There are commercial for sale signs and build the suit signs up. The council's foresight in soaring that and the effort to, of the staff to facilitate commercial development has truly brought borne fruit. It's, one of my favorite sayings is good luck is being prepared for opportunity. And when the need for those facilities arose in the market, Lakewood was prepared. So now we're being lucky. So great job for staff for continued both that and for working so hard on laying the groundwork for that to occur. So if there's nothing further, it's time to move to recess to executive session. Council will recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation. The council is not expected to take final action following the executive session. Council, please exit and enter the private Zoom meeting. I will come back only to adjourn this meeting, but we will take no further action at that time. We are in recess.
Brianna, could you send the link again, please? Because I can't seem to find it.
It's attached to the original one, Jason.
Is it?
Yeah.
Are we in it?
Yes, just me and you.
Is that right? Am I in the wrong one?
I hope so. Brianna, you here? Brianna's here.
I didn't click anything.
You need to exit.
Are we in the wrong one?
Yeah, neither of you left this, the original city council meeting.
I don't see the other link. Can you send it to me?
I'm resending it, it's just taking me 30 seconds.
Yeah, to the work one, my work one there, it'd be great.
Let me know if you don't have it.
And there's no busi- further business to discuss. Lakewood City Council meeting for tonight is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good night.